Let's call the meeting to order. Listen, we are all present this evening. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of June 5th, 2018. Anybody? I have a couple. Under that ordinance, Mr. Carroll?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed you deleted the definition of downtown.
I deleted the definition of downtown? Oh, the downtown area, you know? Okay. Yes.
Why?
That was just as to the skateboard.
Yeah, as a skateboard.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I understand that, but why would you delete it?
Because the only reason why we needed it in the skateboard ordinance was because we were prohibiting skateboards in that area on the street. And so that was a specific definition. But we don't-
It was a section-specific definition.
Just a minute, I want to hear from Carol.
Okay. So, let me pull the ordinance.
Yeah, it was the skateboard ordinance.
Yeah. No person shall ride on any public street within the downtown area bounded. That is so that, that was at the request of Mr. Azell, because he wants to ride his skateboard in that specific area. And if we take that out, then the only prohibition against skateboards, inline skates or roller skates are on private or public property where signs are posted.
That's my next question.
Okay.
If a private business owner in that area posts a notice that they are prohibited, how do we enforce that? If you have, you have a business in the middle of the block?
Well, it's sidewalk.
And you say it's prohibited, prohibited in this area, I don't think anyone, including our police department, can enforce that.
Well, but the ordinance says you can.
Okay. No person riding a skateboard or on private property, that is broader than just downtown. Now granted, downtown is a tough area because the sidewalks are actually the city's sidewalks. But, in general, if someone's riding a skateboard, inline skates or roller skates, like let's say in the Walmart parking lot, and if there is a sign that says, "No skateboards allowed", then the police can be called and they can ticket. And they have before. It used to happen a lot around Boomer.
Yes.
And there would be tickets for Boomer. I mean, for skateboarding around Boomer, or, you know, different locations.
Or for instance, Bill, the library has no skateboarding signs posted there. So when this ordinance is, goes, when that part of the ordinance goes away, the library is still prohibited for skateboarding. And they currently, when they see kids out there, they just call the police and the police run them off. That won't change at all.
Could the post office do the same thing?
Yes, and I think they do. And the courthouse.
And the merchant. Could the merchant do the same thing?
According to this ordinance, yeah.
Which, to me, is awkward and won't work.
Well, Bill, I think it'll work just as well as it currently does.
No, it can't, Bill. If you have one merchant in the middle of the block, and they don't want skateboards in front of them, you're never going to keep a 16-year-old from riding right down there.
Well, here's, here's the thing. The skateboards actually, downtown, the sidewalks around the square, the sidewalks are the city's.
I understand.
So, and if you're gonna ride, if we say that you can ride a skateboard on the sidewalk, then the merchant wouldn't be able to stop the person from riding down the sidewalk. Now, everywhere else, the sidewalks are the merchants. So, if-
What do you mean everywhere? Outside of downtown?
Yeah. Outside of, like, the little square area, sidewalks are, I mean, other than right by the street, the sidewalks near the buildings in the rest of the town are all the property of the property owners. So if he posts no, or she, posts no skateboards or inline skates on their property, then it's effective.
Awkward.
Well, but Bill, I mean, let's not, let's not pretend that skateboards are any more onerous or obnoxious than people bicycling or riding their scooters, or, there are lots of things that if someone's being a nuisance, can be a nuisance. There is still an ability, if we have somebody causing a problem, you can all just always call the police and ask them to come run them off. But that's true not just for skateboards. All this does is treat skateboards like any other mode of pedestrian, pedestrian travel, transportation, like a bike or a scooter.
I think the wording is awkward. Sorry.
Okay. I understand. Do you-
And I have no, I have no idea what to say, or if we even need to.
I don't think we need to. I think we just treat skateboards like everything else, and then if some issue arises where we have a gang of rampant skateboarders causing mayhem, then maybe we'll address it.
We had the same situation with segways on the trail. I have a problem with segways on the trail.
Ah. Now that is an interesting issue, Mayor, because actually, state law allows segways on the trail.
I understand that.
But our ordinance says no motorized vehicles, don't they? Aren't those motorized, or they're not?
But you can put, you can put golf carts on the trail.
Not on ours. Don't think we're supposed to have any kind of motorized vehicles on ours, are we?
Read it. It says you, the golf cart should-
Well, state law allows segways on streets that aren't state highways, and on sidewalks and trail. Whether we have our ordinance or not, state law is gonna apply.
Supercedes.
Supersedes. And-
Would this be more difficult than state law if we didn't allow segways?
Yes. And I believe that this-
Which we could do.
No, I don't think that we can. Because segways are, what they have defined segways as, a personal assistance device.
I know.
So, that's the, it-
Okay, so it's either way around.
Yeah. It, based on the definition, I would think that we cannot be stricter than the state because what they are saying is, this allows people to get around that can't get around. Now, I understand, you've got to be able to stand straight and have pretty good balance to do the segue, so I'm not really sure how many people would be aided. But that language makes me think, generally, we are not stricter than state law. Some areas we can be, but this seems to be providing access.
But we can't, it's irrelevant as we can't supersede state law anyway.
There are a couple areas in state law that allow you to be stricter. The question is, is what is stricter and-
Because then it becomes an ADA issue.
We don't, we don't want to go down that rabbit hole.
No, we do not.
We really don't want to go down that rabbit hole.
How many segways do we have here in town, do you think?
As far as I know, we don't have any. But I haven't made a study of it, but I've seen none.
Please don't. Please.
Well, just to chime in, Brian, Captain Singleton last time said that there weren't any nuisance issues downtown with skateboards, or at least hadn't issued any tickets in years. To put you on the spot, do you know if there's any issues with skateboards or segways anywhere in the city?
Well, I think that is why that law was created, if I remember right, because there was a problem downtown, and that was initiated.
There was a problem downtown?
There was an issue with skateboarders downtown, tearing up a lot of the property. That's why that law was, that ordinance was put in there, and that curbed that problem. Unfortunately, not all skateboarders keep their skateboard on the ground.
Do you get any, do you get skateboard calls to go and investigate anywhere in the city now?
Some kind of time.
Okay, but not very often?
A lot of times, like on the tins courts, things that they're, they can do damage to, but not just riding those.
What about segways? Segways on the trails?
Just the mall cops.
Just the mall cops.
I've ridden a segue.
Yes? And?
I turn them all over to 16-year-olds. That's not my bag. Item three, discuss the Central National Bank Center management firm contract option renewal for five years.
Yes, Mayor, I'll kick it off, and then Rick and Kevin can come on up. You guys can come on up and start the podium. Our current agreement with Spectra Group to manage the Central National Bank Center runs through June of 2019. What we're talking about today is a potential renewal at some point that the current contract allows us, allows you to do, if you so choose, to exercise a five-year option. If we're going to exercise a five-year option, we probably want to do it sometime relatively soon, but the contract allows till December of this year, December of 18. There's many good reasons to consider doing it now, and they're going to talk to us about it. I think they've done a good job managing the facility, and I would think we want to have them continue doing that, but they're here today in study session to discuss with you that possibility, try and answer your questions, and then at some point, I would like to bring a renewal to you to consider. So, with that, Kevin Brisky is our general manager, and our regional manager is Rick Houghton, who's here today to, they're both here today to go through the slideshow, so, and then answer questions.
Excellent. Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, I appreciate you having us here today to run through this presentation and talk to you a little bit more about the great things we're doing down at the Central National Bank Center. As Gerald had mentioned, the term currently, the contract goes through June 2019, with the option to extend for five years through 2024, which is what we're here to talk about today. A little bit about Spectra, our background, we're a leader in hosting and entertaining, and we provide experiences for venues like this one here. We work with millions of people and have, over all our venues, millions of people come through every year. It's a great situation here because not only do we manage the venue, but we also handle all the food, service and hospitality here, and we also handle all the partnership and sponsorship sales as well. So it's a really nice package that we're managing all of those on behalf of the city to maximize revenue and minimize expenses for the facility and for the city of Enid. This just goes through why Spectra, you know, why, why choose Spectra to manage the facility, more events. You look at a facility like ours, this is a city of 50,000, and, you know, we do three, right now it's 364 events we're on target to do. I'm pushing our sales staff to make sure they get that one more, so that we can say we do one a year. It's just a lot easier and cleaner. So, right now, 364 events during this fiscal year, and that's a wide range of banquets, conferences, conventions, weddings, concerts, sporting events, all kinds of stuff. And, you know, I think we're really proud of the wide range of events that we've brought here to the community and will continue to do so. Marketing and sales, we handle all in-house, which is great. We have a sales staff of two, a marketing staff of one, plus myself with a marketing and sales background to really not just promote the shows that are going on at the facility, but also the facility itself, and really selling it as, you know, your one-stop-shop for your banquets and your facilities, where we can offer everything, and, you know, something that we really pride ourselves in. Experience and expertise, the great thing about this is the support that we get from people that I get, from people like Rick and all the other people up at corporate Spectra. They're only a phone call away, they're a quick drive or flight down if we ever need help locally, and not only that, but, and we'll get into this in a future slide, we have a wide variety of venues throughout the region, throughout the nation, and it really gives us a great network to work with, to kind of look at everything that happens here, and if there's something that's new to me or I'm not familiar with, there's plenty of resources for me to reach out to and to make sure that we're making the best decisions. And I'm not making them alone for the account here. Partnerships, this is another thing that I'm really proud of, what we've done here at the CMB Center. Again, we'll get onto it at another slide in more detail, but we're at about $400,000 in corporate partnerships. For a facility this size, I think that's unprecedented, what we've done here, and says a lot about the community and the business community, about the support and the belief they have in the Central National Bank Center. So, we're really excited for that. And then focus on employees. We have, we have a great staff here. You know, and we have a couple back here, Tim, our box office manager, Becky, our director of finance, and they'll probably agree with me that I push them harder and harder every day to make sure that we are doing what's best for our facility. And the exciting thing is, is they, you know, they really believe in what we do, and they're really excited what we do, and the support that we're able to get from corporate, and the support that we're able to give each other. It's a really neat situation where we have a small staff and we're able to really work together. You know, Becky and I, the other day, we had a dance recital, and we got a chance to bond popping popcorn. We did 340-something boxes, so we were really proud of that feat, and, you know, and Tim and I, during the holiday time, we do about 40 to 50 events that month, and after we, we work during the day, we flip, help flip rooms at night and move tables and do whatever we can to make sure events are successful and things are successful. So, we have a really great staff there and that really enjoys working together and really gets the whole picture idea, and it's not just about their job, it's about working as a team and making sure we're as successful as possible, and pitch in on whatever side we need to and we have to. This is just a quick overview of where our buildings are located. You can see that they're throughout the country, throughout Canada, and we have a wide variety of buildings from sizes of cities to geographic regions to sizes of staff. I mean, we have a wide range. And then to narrow it down a little bit and look in our region, well first, we have, this is about how many venues we manage, 115 arenas and stadiums, 50 convention centers. We're, again, a unique account, and I actually love the way it works, that we are both an arena and we are a convention center, because we have the best of both worlds, and it really allows to max, us to maximize the amount of events we do down there. And then facilities within-house food, we fall under that as well, where we're one of those that also manages our in-house food and beverage. This is the map of taking a look at a smaller region, a more narrow picture of the different venues that are within Spectra in the Midwest region. I think what's most important about this and what we like to say is, these are all people who are looking at a lot of the same shows that we are looking at, who are doing a lot of the same things that we are looking at. And it gives us a great network and a lot of power to go to agents and artists and say, not only are you going to play Enid, Oklahoma, but we're going to put it together a whole weekend for you, where you can go from Wichita Falls to Enid to Salina to Independence, Missouri, and it makes it that more attractive for the agent, when they don't have to go find four different dates, they're coming to one place to find four dates. And it really makes it nice for us to get, to work on getting more shows and more events for our facility.
And that coordination happens on a weekly basis, where somebody might get a hold for a show in, you know, in Nampa, Idaho, and we'll pass on the lead to everybody else, and next thing you know, we're doing four or five dates of a show before anybody else knows about the industry, so.
Kevin, we're one of the smallest ones on that list. How do we stack up against them with attendance at our events?
I think we're really strong.
Most of them are twice our size.
They are, and, you know, I think the nice thing about the size of our facility is it's the right size for this community. I think if we had anything larger, it would be, it would be a lot tougher to get some of the smaller shows, just speaking on some past experiences. You know, things fit very nicely. If there's an event that we think's going to draw 2,000 or 1,500 people, it's going to look good in our facility. But we can also get the bigger shows that some of these venues are getting, like the Reba McEntires, the Alan Jacksons, because we have enough seats at 3,500 to 4,000. So, what I, what I should say too, is that the market has been great, not only for corporate partnerships, but for attendance and ticket buyers. It's always well above average. When you, when you compare the, the shows that play similar markets, this is, this always sells very well. Enid is a known commodity out there for the agents and promoters, because it's successful when we bring shows here.
What will happen with the new hotel?
That's gonna, I think-
Is that on your list?
It is, and I think on the convention side, it's going to be a big help, and we'll get into that a little further.
For convention, yeah, it's going to help out greatly for conventions.
I mean, just one example of a building that is larger than us, but we're doing similar shows to. You look at the Silverstein-Ison Arena in Independence, Missouri. So, a great example is when Willie Nelson was here, that was one of the facilities we routed with. So, it's pretty neat that they're a 7,500-seat facility, but we're doing the same shows they are here in Enid, Oklahoma. It's pretty cool, and it still works for that whole routing the shows here. And the nice thing is that, you know, there's a lot of facilities there. So if for some reason someone doesn't have a date, there's plenty of options for us to route with and work with on bringing shows. And it's not only that, it's just the, having the knowledge around there. I mean, we look at the Comic-Con event that we have coming up, it's something that we've always wanted to do, and we had a great opportunity to partner with Eagle Marketing with, but we were, all were looking for some, some more knowledge behind it, and we knew that our facility in Salina, Kansas, had a Comic-Con show, worked with the same person they're partnering with to bring that show to this facility. So, it also allows us to generate more events by working closely with our other facilities in the area.
And not to belabor this, but in, this June 26th, we're all going to be out in Nashville. About 12 of these facilities are going to go to Nashville, so that's where all the major agents are for to represent all the major country shows. We're going to go out there, and they don't want to meet with individual buildings, they just don't have time for that. But when we go and say, hey, we've got 12 buildings we're bringing out to you, we're going to sit down with you, we're actually sitting down with all the major agents of big agencies, creative artists, William Morris, as a group, because we're more powerful as a group, and that's where we're going to discuss, like, hey, you know, what do we have coming up next year, and what can we put in our buildings here? And Kevin will be, obviously be part of that meeting, June 26th.
So, just going over, I know we've seen this multiple times, so I'll go kind of quickly through it. Impacts of the CMB Center downtown and some of the things that we focus on, raising the quality of life, making this a destination city, growing downtown, attracting, you know, a lot of events and bringing in additional sales tax and hotel tax. From the economic impact survey, you know, business and leisure are what we focus on, business on the convention side with the different conventions and conferences that come in, and then on the leisure side, the concert aspect and the different sporting events that we hold there. And I thought it was really neat when they did the survey, that the number one list, for reason people stay overnight in Enid for leisure, is that right there, concerts. Over 22% of people who come in for leisure opportunities overnight to stay here are staying for concerts. So, pretty neat, pretty neat right there. How we came up with, the numbers we came up with, we have a great ticketing system, we're able to do a lot of zip code reporting, we're able to track where different people are coming in from to attend events at the facility. From that, we've been able to generate that 16% of patrons for ticketed events are from outside the area. It's a little tougher on the convention side, because there's not a way to get lists of people who attend, but we estimate that about 20% of patrons are from outside the area, and an estimated of 1.3 million annually is generated in revenue because of the Central National Bank Center for Enid. Some of the events that attract those out of town visitors, you know, looking anywhere from concerts to sporting events, to different types of meetings, weddings when families are traveling in, a lot of different things, and it's why we like doing such a wide variety of events, because it really, you know, allows us to maximize the amount of people we're bringing into the, to Enid. And then just a brief overview of where we stand this year, we're through 10 months, May is not, the numbers aren't finalized yet. So this is everything up except for May and June, but with May and June projections, projecting 364 events, and you get the total income and operating expenses there for a net operating income of a $488,000 deficit. And when you look on the next slide here, you can see that it's continually improving every year that we've managed the facility. Every year, it continues to get better. Again, the number for this year is still adjusting. I think the last time I did this presentation, it was at 490. April came in a little better than projected, so now we're at about 488, 49. So, those numbers are fluctuating, but one thing we know is it will be better than this previous year, as we continue to try to keep improving by increasing revenue, you know, working to create more events, bring in more events, and also, you know, really managing our expenses.
Kevin, I have a question on sponsorships.
Yes.
You know, if you double that sponsorship amount, you can work about that $480,000.
True. Very true.
My question is, where does the money for those sponsorships go? Do they go to you or to the city of Enid?
They go to our budget. Well, to the city.
Revenue's revenue.
Revenue goes to the city.
Yeah.
When you get the hotel, can you expand the solicitation of that, that type of money?
To that particular hotel, or, you mean, just to try to get more?
To reduce that $480,000 figure.
Yeah. I definitely think with, with the new hotel-
That's good to add $400,000 there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a great thing that, you know, I talk about all the time, is that's, you know, that's a non-risk factor of what we do. I mean, events, you know, some are going to succeed more than others, you just don't know where that number's going to come in, but this is a consistent number that we have across our fiscal year, which is nice. And it's something that, you know, we're always trying to look to bring on more partners, to bring on more supporters of the facility, and, you know, it's something that, you know, I think we put a lot of focus on.
Keep it up.
Different, just a list of some of our accomplishments over the last seven years. You know, you look at the sold-out concerts, the Reba McEntires, Darius Rucker, Little Big Town, Alan Jackson, Willie Nelson, sold-out championship bull riding this past year. All the other concerts that you see there, from country concerts to Christian concerts to, to a mix, you know, with REO Speedwagon here this past October, the Beach Boys, Styx, some great shows. And the one things we don't want to forget are the annual events that we have here. There were some of the most important events that we host, the OSSAA basketball tournaments. To have two this past year was, was awesome, and it was really great to develop a wonderful relationship with them. Skelter basketball tournament, downtown basketball, maybe tournament. And this is an area that I think, you know, we see, we can see a lot of growth in, as we found from that economic study, sports is a big area where people aren't traveling one to two people at a time to Enid, they're coming with groups of families. So it's an area that not only can we see growth at our facility, but I think it'll really help fill those hotel rooms here in Enid. So, five straight years of hosting over 325 events, I think is really impressive. You know, it keeps us really busy with, with 12 full-time staff, and, you know, with a town this size, I think that's a really impressive number of what we've been able to do here to keep the facility busy day in and day out. And then, as we just had mentioned, reduction in operating deficit every year since we've managed the facility. So a couple other things, the reopening of Convention Hall and the building of Event Center, the Event Center, my predecessor, Keller Taylor, instrumental in overseeing those processes. The first time the speakers ball had moved out of one of the major cities of Oklahoma City or Tulsa, to come here in Enid, and was a huge success. The naming rights agreement with Central National Bank, we couldn't be happier with the partnership we have. I mean, they are just phenomenal to work with. It couldn't have worked out better. They are awesome supporter, the people over there are great to work with, and we really enjoy that partnership, and it's really big for the facility and for Central National Bank, works out really well for both of us. And then national events that have been here to Enid because of the facility, Fireball Run coming through here, and then American Kite Flyers Association hosting their national convention here. We talked about the sponsorship, you know, revenue. Here's a list of some of the sponsors that partner with us, so you see different local partners to national partners. This is just a small snapshot, we think we're adding two more already for this upcoming fiscal year, so that number's going to jump well over 30, and I think, as you had mentioned, Mayor, there's still room for growth there, and something we're looking to grow, you know, every, every year. So, we're really excited and have a lot of support. And the cool thing about these partners is not only do they have either a sign on somewhere in the building, but they're, they're people who, and businesses who are having a sign, they're having their events with us, they're purchasing tickets, they're allowing us to work with their employees to get them early purchase information for, for tickets and pre-sales. So, they're a true partnership and really wanting to make the facility succeed. And then some of the public relations stuff, you know, that we do, we have talked about this a little bit, and you can take a look here on some of the things. So, work closely with Steve Keim and on the Good Morning Enid Entertainment segment, where I go on every other week and we talk about the things upcoming at the CMB Center that we're able to, to get the word out. Weekly radio interviews, we've developed a great relationship with the radio stations in town, where every Friday morning I go on with Alan Klepper at KOFM and KGWA, and then every Wednesday afternoon I go on KNID and talk about all the different stuff we have coming up at the Central National Bank Center. And, you know, a great relationship with the Enid News and Eagle, too. Some of these clips are just some of the, two of them, the one with the picture of Lone Star and the Ron White talks comedy, those were front-page stories that the newspaper ran, and then in their Pride of the Plains, an economic development story on everything that was going on at the CMB Center and everything that we're doing downtown. Some upcoming events that we have going on, I like showing this because it's such a wide range of events we have. You know, you look at some of the conference, the concerts we have on there, Easton Corbin, Newsboys, Lone Star, Ronnie Millsap, but there's, there's a lot more to that when you look at the Mid-America Youth Basketball Tournament, a tournament that's been coming to Enid for so long, and I know teams will, that are from the Oklahoma Panhandle and even that area, Texas- And I know teams will, that are from the Oklahoma Panhandle and even that area, Texas, will pass up going to the Amarillo site to come to Enid and play here because they just enjoy the facility a lot more and they enjoy the area a lot more.
What, what age groups are involved in that?
That is a wide range from anywhere from kids just starting to learn in elementary school all the way up through high school. This past year, they had 27 teams travel into town and this year they're looking to get that closer to 35. And the nice thing about having some of the younger students here is, or the elementary middle school, is you know they're coming with their families. They're not just coming on their own, which I think is a key to, to the success of that tournament and for the revenue they generate for Enid.
Are there any local teams participate in that?
There are a couple. I know Chisholm participates every year, but a lot of them, I know Guiman brings a lot in, a lot of them come from farther around the area.
Don't you have a wrestling tournament also?
We do, yep. That's in Mid-American Nationals in December. It's a two-day tournament that'll be coming here as well. And that's a great partnership and really is helping us to develop that wrestling relationship and that network across the state for us to get more wrestling events. Because that's another group that travels really well. Another thing, you know, I'm really proud of is, you know, the Oklahoma City Thunder Youth Basketball Camp, moving, bringing that to Enid and really starting to develop that relationship with the Oklahoma City Thunder. I think that can only grow. The Mayor's Conference, which Mayor Shuwi was, you know, brought here, really exciting. Some other things down there. Enid Comic Con, we have talked about how, how cool of an event that is. In the Wild Sportsman's and Outdoor Expo is moving to the Central National Bank Center this year, which we're really, we're really proud to work with on. Gaslight Theater, their Charlie Awards. Air Force Ball coming back after a huge success last year. We're really excited to have that phenomenal event that Vance Air Force Base put on. We're really excited to partner with that event on them. And then here are the two conferences that we have booked and will be coming into FY19. The Oklahoma Episcopal Convention will be here and the Oklahoma Architect Conference will be here as well. So it's going to be a busy beginning of November with us with back-to-back conferences coming here. And then Paw Patrol, a great family show. It's, it's the hot family show right now amongst younger kids, so we're excited to have that as well. So a lot coming up and upcoming events and a lot going on as our schedule continues to fill up and we're continually announcing and booking more events. So some future opportunities that we have coming up, as, as we have talked about this, you know, hotel, long-term business is going to be a huge thing for us as that hotel comes in. I think the last time we spoke, there were three different conferences or conventions we were working on and close to confirming for 2020, that's now up to four. So they keep coming, we keep reaching out, making those contacts because I think it's just so important to have that long-term business and to go into future fiscal years knowing we already have some big business locked in. And, and sporting events, it's just one of those areas where we've heard it mentioned as far as filling the hotels and bringing in families and people who have that expendable revenue, sporting events are where it's at. And we, we're aggressively pursuing more and more sporting events and I think we're going to continue to see that grow in the near future. And, you know, just a bunch of different things, looking at how we can expand our food and beverage footprint in Enid. You know, we've gotten a lot of great feedback on, on the chef and the food and beverage that we prepare. How do we expand that to areas beyond our facility? So a bunch of different opportunities. This is a slide, I think, that really separates our staff, Spectre in general, from, you know, other people out there. We take a lot of pride in being part of this community. And I'll say, out of all the places I've been personally, this community has been by far the most welcoming and the most that has been willing to let me get involved, which I, I really enjoy. To be an honorary commander out at Vance Air Force Base has been an unbelievable experience. The other things with the Cherokee State Regional Heritage Center, Gaslight Theater being a board member and all the other events. And, you know, it's just not myself, it's our other staff members, you know, marketing coordinator, sales manager, box office manager, all being involved in the community. And I think that is, you know, where I feel, you know, we can be very successful is developing those relationships, becoming part of it, taking a lot of pride in, in being here in this community and wanting to be here and wanting to be a part of it. We're just not here to do a job. We're, we're here to invest in the community. We're here to be a part of it and want to be a part of it outside of the facility as well. And I think that's something that as staff, we're really proud, proud in and, and excited that Enid is so welcoming for us to do that. Because I've been other places where it's not that way at all. And, and here it is not the case. So we really appreciate that because it makes us feel welcoming. I'm from the East Coast, as is Tim, you know, and, and there's other people from different places that aren't from Enid and it's tough going into a new community. So it's really exciting, you know, to be welcome like we have been here. So that's pretty much what we have here. Any questions that we can answer, anything we can further explain or elaborate on?
Let me just comment, you know, one of the things that you didn't cover, but I think is a very important part of the service that you provide is the, the help that you do with nonprofits and other things that are here in the city. When I think of the Chili Cook-Off and I think of all the different fundraisers that happen in town, Enid Roller Girls, there's, there's all kinds of opportunities that are made for, for activities like that. You provide that venue and it's greatly appreciated.
And, and we do try to work closely with them to, to work within their budget because we know they're there trying to, like you said, to fundraise or trying to keep their, their Roller Girls Club going. And, you know, we want to work with them and make it affordable for them. And we also want them to be able to say they're in the prestige facility at, in Enid. So, and, and we really enjoy working with them as well. I mean, they're, they're great partners. I mean, the Enid Roller Girls, for example, I mean, they're one of our volunteer groups now in the concession stands that, that are able to not only have their bouts with us, but now are able to also do a little fundraising too. So it's been some great partnerships in the community.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item four, discuss the Meadow Lake Crossing analysis for trail, for the trail.
Yes, the intent of bringing this was to complete this analysis of five options to determine how the commission wants to move forward on getting the trail across Meadow Lake. Chris, you want to introduce?
This is Brett Cavendish, his return here. He's finished his analysis. We've taken a look at the draft report and gone comments back and he's here to make the presentation.
Good evening. Appreciate everybody's time and, and hopefully we can go through this presentation fairly, fairly quickly. What we did is we answered the RFP, if I can get this to move forward. There we go. Okay, thank you. We answered an RFP back in January of this year. We were selected to do an analysis based on the four options discussed in the request for proposals. We did our initial fieldwork in March of this year and then started developing some conceptual designs in April, refined those up through May and developed a draft engineering study based on those conceptual reports. It has been submitted to staff a couple of weeks ago. We've got some initial comments back on that. And now we want to come before you all to kind of find or present some of the findings that we had and gain some of your feedback so we can come back and finish the final report, give it to staff, and then you all have a hard in-hand document that you can refer to. As the RFP said, there were four initial evaluations of conceptual designs that we wanted to do. The first one would be an upstream crossing upstream of the spillway, about midway through Meadow Lake. The second one would be across the existing spillway in the dam area, a low water crossing downstream between the spillway and Highway 81, and then a crossing adjacent to Highway 81. And then as we were developing the conceptual plans, we came up with a fifth option, a floating bridge structure across the lake. We've seen this in a couple of other areas throughout Oklahoma and thought this might be an opportunity for one as well. So looking at briefly where all of these options are, the first option is upstream, about midway through the lake. The fifth option, the floating option, is about center of the lake. And then as we continue on, the section op, second option at the spillway, the third one, the low water crossing between spillway and Highway 81, and then the adjacent to Highway 81 options. Now, we did look at two options on the, one at Highway 81, one that will abut to the existing bridge and then one offset from the existing bridge. And we'll get to those here in just a second. The first option, again, is the middle, middle of the lake and it is basically a very simplistic structure. It's a single span structure that crosses the entire floodway of Muddy Creek, Muddy Boggy Creek, Boggy Creek, through this. It's a very similar span, single span bridge. If you can see in this location here, similar to some of the other prefabricated bridge structures that you all have for trail systems here in Enid. It is roughly 245 feet in, in length. It's very centrally located between the north side of the park and the south side of the park, accessible very easily from either side of the ADA, current ADA parking areas through there. Has very minimal impacts to the flood plain and the floodway as we've set the abutments outside the floodway. But it also has the potential to be more of an iconic feature than just a very simplistic crossing from one side to the other. Like the features that you have at your trail on Highway 81 as it crosses south here, there are things that we can do similar to that at the abutments to make this more an iconic feature as well. Now, some of the challenges that we see with this option, obviously spanning 245 feet, constructability will be a very difficult task through this. They will be out in the water during construction. The facility or the, or the equipment to hang and span this bridge while they set it in place will be rather large. So there will be some impact to the existing area during construction, but it will obviously be restored back to current feature. There is a fair amount of dirt work and earthwork required for this as we need to raise this bridge up to meet the minimum flood allowances. The base flood elevation in this area, I think, is around 12, 1240. So we'll need to set that bridge up just a little bit higher than that so we meet all the theme of requirements. The second option is that we investigated is crossing at the spillway. I think this has a lot of merit on the surface. I think it's a centrally located, very visible location for crossing. It's probably the shortest span opportunity to get from the north side to the south side from a bridge standpoint, easy connectivity to both sides of the, of the park. But this one has some rather significant drawbacks that we see from this. First of all, we're in the limits of the floodway with our construction. That brings, presents us some challenges through this. The second one, there's an emergency spillway on the north side of the dam that we would be impacting with the trail going across. It does allow for not crossing the railroad tracks with this option and the next option that we'll look at. So that is a positive in our opinion. But I think in our initial research and our desktop research, one of the biggest things that we found that, that concerns us from an engineering standpoint is we have no record of how the dam was constructed, what material was constructed, the means and method is that. Initial discussions with some of our counterparts at the Water Resources Board, just in a non-technical discussion was if you go in here and start touching that, are we going to have to rebuild the entire dam and the spillway when we get there? We don't have that answer yet, but OWRB would ask that and we believe the Corps of Engineers would also ask the same question. Now, even though the Corps of Engineers are actually the ones that designed the, the original spillway, we have not been able to find any record of that. It's been several years since they, they did that and they probably have archived those and just in our conversations, they didn't feel it was necessary to go retrieve all that information unless this becomes a reality. But we think that those, those two challenges right there probably eliminate this option. Even though it's a very centrally located, it's a great concept of going across, I think there's some challenges from an engineering standpoint and a risk standpoint that we would recommend another option. The third option?
On the first option, you mentioned that there was parking available.
Yes.
To include ADA. How about an option to?
Yes, all of these, all of these are connected to a parking lot that does currently have ADA parking in those. Yes, that, that, I should have outlined that and thank you for mentioning that. All of these options, we'll, we'll see in the decision makers, all meet ADA requirements. That was our task is we want to be able to meet those requirements, get folks from the north side to the south side. Some are more intricate and more additional engineering, design, construction, but they all will meet ADA compliant. The third option is the low water crossing, seeing the area between the railroad tracks and the low water crossing currently, or excuse me, the spillway. This one has some challenges as well. The Corps of Engineers allows low water crossings on their regulated streams, but only in a temporary fashion. Say for instance, construction of a bridge across the major, major stream that the contractor would need to go from one side to the other repeatedly, they will allow for low water crossings to be installed temporarily. And then when the, the bridge construction is complete, they'll, they'll require all of that come out. In this option here, this is going to be a semi-permanent installation. Corps of Engineers will probably frown upon that. We did not push this issue with them because again, these are conceptual designs, but we just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that that is a very strong possibility. Some of the, some of the benefits of this option obviously is it's going to probably be the least cost expense for construction. It's functional during normal summer days. We have access across from the north and south. And again, this option allows us not to cross the railroad tracks. We, we utilize the, the existing bridge over the train tracks on the south side at this location here. Again, it does encroach on the emergency spillway. That is a concern of ours for this location. But I think more of the, the drawbacks on this, and you see a picture in the, in the lower portion of our screen here, but of a typical low water crossing. These are only typically designed for about the two-year rainfall event. So anytime you have a rainfall event greater than the statistical two-year rainfall event, water overtops these. So whenever water gets up above this, this option isn't unusable. We believe there's significant risk for kids playing in this area during rainfall events. Obviously we'll have handrails on this, but handrails now become a catch for debris. And so we think the maintenance coupled with the risk factor of patrons utilizing this in adverse weather conditions, probably not the best, best use of your dollars.
When you say a rainfall event, how, how, how long generally are we talking about a rainfall event lasting? Days, weeks, months?
Rainfall events are statistically what happens and you can go a two-year, two-hour rainfall event, you can go a two-year, 24-hour rainfall event. So there's different rainfall events. We typically design for the two-year, 24-hour rainfall event. That might be somewhere in the order of three and a half inches in 24-hour period. Okay?
So we're looking at not being able to use it for a day?
Potentially not for using it a day. Now, part of a day. Part of the day. Now, you can have a 50-year rainfall event for the two-hour storm that would drop the same amount of water or same amount of rainfall in that time and it comes and goes in three hours, but at that point in time, more than likely, you're still going to have some upstream attenuation of the rainfall coming down. So it may not, the rainfall event may only last three hours, but you're going to get runoff from upstream for several more hours after that. So again, the, the maintenance and we, we should include, you know, going down here and blocking off the trail as included in those kind of the maintenance tasks as well. Those things need to be involved in the decision-making when we start talking about the low water crossing.
Right. We have full-time staff that would be able to, to?
Yes. Do that on both sides?
Absolutely.
Where people could cross it?
Absolutely.
Someone's going to try to cross it if there's water.
Well, I mean, we also.
Fence it off.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we also, there's still a park there. There's water there, whether there's a sidewalk or not, somebody may still go try to get in the water. I mean, the water will be there. I mean, this is the.
It's all there right now.
This is. An or, an or. This is an ord- an order of magnitude less than the other option we, options we discussed. This is hundred and fifty to a couple hundred thousand dollars.
It is.
Not one and a half million dollars. And I mean, there's, and this is clearly. These other options are lovely if money is no object and an engineer will build you whatever you give them money for.
Brett, could you go ahead and get through the presentation?
Quickly, yeah.
The commission can ask questions because clearly we have questions for you.
Yes, I understand. Alright, sorry, I'll speed up a little bit. Uh, the fourth option was the one at Highway eighty-one and we actually took two, two, two stabs at this. We would, did one where we, uh, tied on to the existing bridge and, uh, designed for something that would be adjacent to, uh, the bridge. Very similar to the picture in the, in the lower corner right here. We would provide a positive barrier between vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic such as a Jersey barrier or something like that. Um, then we also looked at, uh, a second option that would be offset from the, uh, Highway eighty-one bridge, but yet still be in the ODOT right-of-way. And the reason for that is because of the trail and the, um, railroad tracks in a close proximity of that location. We could not make that work. So it still would be on the edge of the, of the right-of-way. Now, when we talked with ODOT Division Four Engineer, Mr. Taylor, about these options. Uh, he was obviously less thrilled, uh, to hear about the potential of tying on to one of his bridges. And he brought up the point of maintenance, uh, shared maintenance, shared costs. Uh, likewise, whenever we have a facility in ODOT's right-of-way, if ODOT deems they need to widen Highway eighty-one, the expense of relocating whatever facility outside of the limits of their construction would then be back on the owner at that point in time. Um, so the, these options, uh, still have some, some merit to them, but, uh, we, we were not very much favored those. Those also were the longest line or length-wise from north to south. It was very outside the, the, the public's visibility of the parks from the north side to the south side as well. So we did not, uh, strongly grade those very well either. And then the last one was one that we have kind of discussed and really it just, we, I just threw the idea out to our staff and said, what about a floating bridge? And everybody kind of looked at me crazy and then they go, well, maybe that will work. And so we did some more research. This option does have some merits and, and the good thing about it from a floodplain and floodway standpoint. If the bridge is floating on the water and the water rises, it rises. It does not impede flow. Um, so this is a good option, uh, that meets that. It is centrally located. It has the same ability as option number one to be an iconic feature, uh, p- uh, possibility. Now, one of the drawbacks, uh, that we have discussed with staff is there, you know, if there ever was the potential to have boats on, on the lake, getting from the east side to the west side in this area, we would have to do some additional height openings. Um, as we try to show in this location right here, and those are obviously exaggerated on the scale here, but, uh, they could be done. Um, so they do have.
What's the lifespan of a structure like that?
It depends on how much you want to spend on it. Uh, now, uh, I had a very long discussion with a, a Marina gentleman just, just today. Um, some of the Oklahoma, um, manufacturers make some very good ones that are galvanized steel encapsulated floats. Uh, those could last fifty years as far as the structure. Now, the decking obviously depending on if you want to just go with wood that's treated or if you wanted to go the next step up, the Tarex, uh, type material that could go up or even go to concrete. Obviously all of those have an effect on your line, life and obviously the bottom line as well. Um, but this one does have some merits to it, um, as well.
How high does that belly up?
We could pass six foot underneath.
Six foot?
Yes. We didn't want to go any more than that. Uh, I think then if you start getting more of that, you have the opportunity for some, uh, toppling effect, uh, during high winds.
I, I would be shocked, shocked if that cost as little as two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Uh, it, it was surprising the cost and, and obviously we can get more elaborate through that. Uh, this was simply a bridge across, uh, did not include any, uh, decorative, um, gazebo types or anything out in the middle area. Uh, it's, it's really, um, you know, the cost was not as much as I thought it was.
You obviously did some work on the cost because you've given us ranges on each option.
Mm-hmm.
That we can rely on for the cost to be within that range, right?
No.
Absolutely, almost.
Almost, okay.
No, um, we did go through, uh, a little more detail than just, you know, swag call a couple of guys on the phone and ask questions. Um, we've done some research on some of these bridges. We've designed some of these bridges of very similar nature, uh, in the past. We've talked with staff, uh, your trail bridge up here, uh, Morale helped us with that, provided us construction cost on those things. So we do have, um, a order of magnitude, let's say, of, of the construction cost through this. But we did take a little bit stronger look at some of these other options. Um, they, they do range from a million and one point five million down to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, but these are ranges and again, we're drawing pretty lines, seeing pictures. No engineering has really been done on this other than make sure it's ADA compliant based on the limited information that we've been able to get.
I would be in favor of eliminating four B because the city of Enid and ODOT have a very good working relationship.
And.
I have a lot of confidence in that.
Mr. Taylor said the same thing, uh, in visiting with him about these, this particular project as well.
Me and Perry.
Yes, yeah. Mr. Taylor's the Division Four.
I wouldn't want anything by the spillway or the highway because that sounds like a horrible idea just to practice. I mean, that sounds dangerous to me as a parent, but, I mean, even, I know they come with safety features, but I haven't lied. And I know that that doesn't always mean that there's safety features anyways. I think spillways and highways are scary to have kids around.
Brett, what did Mr. Taylor say about option three?
Option three was really outside of his scope, um, his ability. Uh, again, we've done.
Because it didn't impact the, the road structures or the bridge? Okay.
Yeah, no.
Is that the Army Water Resources Board that is concerned?
The Corps of Engineers will be, yes, will be the biggest with that, that challenge in progress.
I know, I picked up the phone and called a guy at the Army Corps of Engineers now four years ago and said, had him pull this up on Google Maps and say, hey, is this something you guys would approve? And his answer was, we, this is, yeah, I mean, this is nothing. This is no big deal. It's totally rational. Yeah, we, you might have to get an exemption. There might be some administrative work, but, but we, we don't care. His point was that what Army Corps cares most about in the channel and the floodway is the, and, and I apologize, I don't know the engineer's term, but basically the frictional coefficient of the water, how easily the water flows over the area. And grass makes slows water down, concrete speeds water up. They like water speeding up. Concrete, they're happy.
Yes, I, I, I can understand your, um, your thought there. Again, now you have to take into consideration the safety factors and, and I think you said it very well. You know, water gen- generally attracts people. Uh, when I went out to the park this afternoon to see people fish and there were kids below the spillway playing in the rocks. Uh, you know, kids love water in the summertime and if we.
I like the looks of that, but I, we definitely have to have a way to keep people out of there when water goes over that.
Well, or Bill, we just have to accept that people, you put up signs, you warn people and you accept that some people may in the span of a bridge do something stupid. But that same person may likely do something foolish whether there's a low water crossing or not. I grew up climbing around those rocks and climbing around the spillway. I, half the kids.
Not to do it.
I, and I did it anyway. And I expect half the kids in the city to do the exact same thing. I mean, this is, I cannot believe how much energy and money we put into coming up with. We have an option and we have options that cost ten times as much and, and this is, and we don't actually have anything engineered. We have no design for any of it.
Well, I think there's a partial design.
Well, we just said there's no actual engineering of any of it.
Well, I think he might have misspoke because I think he should have done some engineering with this and I would expect that he would have.
How, how much engineering of each individual option is actually done?
Uh, evaluation of ADA, looking at the floodway and floodplains.
Okay, so our, our pre-existing flood map and our pre-existing ADA parking spots.
And chasing through the designs and thinking through it. I mean, we did not put pen to paper.
So there's no actual engineering done?
Well, you, you showed a sketch.
Yes, and again, that's what the RFP asked for. It was conceptual and was very specific, no design.
Just cut to the chase on option three. What is the process to get permitted through the Corps? Can you explain that?
Corps of Engineers will require, uh.
Because it won't just, we can't get a permit with a phone call.
No, we'll have to ask permission.
Usually a process. Can you explain that?
The process that we have been through in the past with the Corps of Engineers when we've done bridge work is we've done what they call a four oh four permit. Uh, where we have to show the limits of the project, okay? The impacts that it'll have to the floodway and the floodplain. And in order to do that, we have to show a no rise and that's done by hydraulic modeling of, of the entire channel in those areas upstream and downstream. Uh, we've provided that information to them. We also talk about how much fill we're putting into the natural channel and the natural floodplain. And then based on that, if we can show that there's no significant rise of the water surface elevation, no adverse flooding upstream or downstream, that process goes through and it's still at their discretion. They can approve it or they can disapprove it as well. If there are other, they will ask for other options. Do you, have you looked at other options?
That's the benefit of this analysis and the downside of option three, everything else looks good as long as we get a core permit, right?
Then it is possible, yes.
What if the Corps doesn't give us a permit?
Then we don't do it.
And.
You mentioned the Corps may ask what other options you have before they would consider permitting this. Have you, have you done other projects where you've run into that or can you speak to that?
Not right off the top of my head.
Give me something.
Have you done any?
Have I done anything like that? No, okay. Now, uh, I'm sure.
Chart, because the chart to me looks like there's two, to me, there's two viable options. Option three and the floating bridge, option five.
Okay.
And, and option five largely comes down to what, what work you put into the cost estimate. Because if you're right on the low end, that seems more doable. You mentioned one of the downsides of that is when we put boats on the pond, like paddle boats.
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's an issue. So the cost of two seventy-five, does that include having a, the six-foot off-the-water thing where paddle boats can go under or? Or what does that include?
Yeah.
That's what the commission is going to want to know. What would they get for two seventy-five?
Yes, the two seventy-five would be the, basically the concept that we were looking at. It's a floating bridge that does have the ability in different locations to go underneath as well.
And the five fifty is if we run into problems.
The five fifty is if we run into some problems. Again, now when we do the, the floating option, obviously we will need to do some geotechnical work because suspending a two-hundred-foot-long floating bridge, we'll need to anchor it out in the lake. Okay, so we'll have to have anchors, very similar to any boat docks or marinas that you've visited on, on, uh, in Oklahoma.
I mean, my biggest concern with that floating bridge option is, is, I mean, I think that cost number is optimistic based on anything we've done. But moreover, I think that the maintenance cost would be dramatically more than a low water crossing. I mean, if I, I go kayak at McMurtry and I've seen where they've had to drag those boat docks out and power wash them and stuff grows on them. And, and even there on the edge of the lake, you know, they get beat up by stuff floating by. And this seems like it would over time cost a whole lot more than some concrete that we've got to power wash periodically.
What is your recommendation to the commission? You want to just cut to that?
Well, instead of making a recommendation, I actually went backwards. What would I rule out?
I, I don't think the commissioners are, okay.
And, and, and I think that gets us back to, to where submission, uh, a, a recommendation. I think four, option four A and four B are out for obvious reasons, uh, don't want on a facility on ODOT's right-of-way and don't want to take the maintenance responsibility for their facility. So four is out. Um, two, um, I think based on the engineering and the potential risks that we're going to find if we touch the dam, I think will be another one that will eliminate itself as well. So now we're down to one, three and five. One, very expensive, uh, could be iconic. It could be very plain Jane going across one side to the other. Um, so we do have that. I believe it'll be a, a viable option. It's just very expensive. So it's probably third on my list. And then when you get to option three and option five, I look at the risk and the maintenance opportunities that the city would be involved with. Quite honestly, if, I wouldn't want my kid playing down there during rainfall event. I can tell them not to do anything. Don't touch that. That's hot. They go put their hand on it. Um, and they're seventeen and fourteen now. Um, I just don't think option three, even though it is the least cost, uh, it is the simplistic one. It's down away. It's not visible, um, to get from the north side to the south side. I think you all would want something that's visible, that's, that could be seen. This is my access across instead of going down below and then coming up and without the risk of, um, bodily injury, loss of life.
You, you think a floating bridge isn't going to encourage people to go jump off it and go swimming?
It's, it's, other than six foot high, I, I would think daredevils would have something better than that.
Let me ask you this.
I mean, here's the, the really important, if you go out there and you spend any time at that park, there are two places people cross one side or other. One, they walk across the railroad bridge, which clearly we wanted to discourage.
We had signs up that say, don't do that.
And they still do it.
And they still do it. Uh, and two, they go and just hop across the rocks where this low water crossing would be.
Yes.
There's some amount of, let's be rational, reasonable human beings here with a finite budget. And, and if, if our goal is to create some big grand thing, that's, that's one issue. Though we spend a lot of money at Meadow Lake doing nice, big, beautiful things. If we just want to make a really simple, workable solution, this seems really obvious. I mean, I, I like, I, I think a floating bridge would be, be lovely in concept, but I don't think there's a chance that something we want to look at gets, comes in at two seventy-five. Uh, and then we're going to be dredging it out, dragging it out every year or two and incurring a lot of maintenance costs. This seems really obvious.
Brett, if the city was to engage you to do option three, I'm sure you would execute option three, right?
Absolutely, with some caveats. I mean, there, there is, I, I think there is a tremendous amount of liability of creating a hazardous situation that if somebody bodily injury or death, they would come back and look not only at the city, but they would look at the design and did you do everything possible?
Is that accurate, Carol?
We have had that happen before, that people have gone after our engineering companies. Yes.
Are we liable when somebody steps off the, off the sidewalk into traffic and gets hit by? Because I, I kind of see this flowway as the same thing as walking down the sidewalk and seeing cars going up and down the street and using a certain, you know, there's a certain, uh, degree of risk involved when you decide to step out into, into moving traffic.
Sure.
I know, this is, uh, you know, I mean, I guess in order to be able to protect the general public, we could put rail, railing down the highway all the way down and prevent them from going down. But, I mean, I, I, I kind of feel like we're, I don't know. It's, it's, it's kind of surreal.
If we've mitigated the risk, that's all we can do. As we know, anybody can sue the city for anything at any time. And it's a question of going through the court system to see whether we're liable or not at the tort claim system, then the court system.
Yeah, I mean, basically if people weren't jerks, we wouldn't have to worry about it.
I, I told.
I have one question on, uh, uh, okay, we had one of the rain events and, and it gets covered in water for however many hours it gets covered. Does that weaken the structure over time? Does, do we have to redo the thing because it's undone underwater? Uh, is there any ma- continuing maintenance for, uh, problems that that might cause?
Let me answer the maintenance problems, uh, question first. Obviously after rainfall events, you'd want to go and visibly inspect the structure, remove any debris or anything like that. Uh, that would be the first and foremost. Design-wise, we would design it very similar to your spillway to make sure that we had cutoff walls upstream and downstream enough based on the geotech, uh, report of the soils and the erosion, uh, susceptibility of those soils. The velocities that we're talking about coming out of the spillway, the energy that comes over and creates an erosion problem downstream of this uh, would be very similar to what the spillway design would, would be like. So back to your question, Mr. Manager, can we design it? Absolutely, we can.
You're telling me what I'm taking from this is you can design and build it for those ranges, right?
We believe so.
So the low water crossing, this commission, we want to get something done. Clearly most of those options are not affordable, which probably makes them not feasible. The two that are, we, we've discussed three and five. Five's got some issues. Three seems to be the most simplistic, but it has the issues of.
Permitting.
Permitting, which, which is a, which is a valid concern because we don't know how long. Does that take a year? Does it take six months? What's your guess?
Uh, typically it takes. Typically, it takes a minimum of four months and that's if we have done our legwork with the Corps of Engineers and it's very simple, a temporary low-water crossing permitting process, one that will be permanent, I believe will take longer than that. It may be up to a year.
Man, I agree with you on number three.
I just have a question.
Just say it.
Okay.
We spent $150,000 on two restrooms at Bonn Haskins Park today.
Have to be spending more than that.
It's not that much money, but $150,000.
I guess, yeah.
I don't think they hit this number though. That's the part for me, that's what we're talking about with this floating bridge. I don't think they hit that number. Not only do I think that they don't hit that number, the upkeep on a structure like that, I think is going to be exponentially higher than the other ones. So the overall cost, even if we buy this front-end price tag, the overall cost that we're going to pay for it, it may seem small now, but I think this thing eats us up over the years.
We did not include any maintenance costs.
Well, I just have a question on the floating bridge. So if the lake fills up and the bridge rises, and I'm not super technical or engineering, but when, if the bridge is a particular length, when the water rises, wouldn't it come away from the edges of the land?
No, they'll be anchored on either side within a bucket.
Oh, that's what you said would anchor it, so that would make sense.
Yeah, so as it raises, the ramps would be, on low water would be angling down and high water, they would be angling up.
What we're looking at is a way to get a trail extended to Vance Air Force Base and you've got to get across Meadow Lake. And to me, even if you spend twice as much as $150,000, that still gets them across the lake and we still have the right-of-way to purchase all the way out.
And we haven't spent a huge amount of money recreating the wheel here.
And if it's not available for five days a year, it's still available 360.
It won't be five days.
And we've not had one their whole entire life at Meadow Lake anyway.
One at a time.
The thing I want to bring up, and I brought it up before and never have gotten a satisfactory answer, is you're still, even if we decide on this bridge option, how do we connect this to the existing trail?
When we solve this, we would connect. We would connect. His sketches do not show, they show going to the parking lot, like he said, with ADA accessibility. We would probably want to connect to where the trail, the current trail design to Vance terminates on the southwest corner of Meadow Lake. We would want to probably have him or whoever's going to design it and build it to connect it there and then on the north side, connect to wherever it ends on the north side. Right now, it goes to the parking lot.
Right, yes, I understand you can say that, but if you look at the north side, I can't see any way that we can run a trail from where this is going to cross the creek down there.
Commissioner, I assure you, with enough money and time, engineering-wise, we will be able to connect there.
Well, and again, being just rational, being reasonable, I go ride that trail with my kids and I start at my in-law's house over on Seneca and go all the way down the trail and come around the water tower. There is an obvious place when we go ride our bikes to get down to the Ferris wheel area.
Well, that's fine, but I mean, because you know where everything is, but I mean, if you've got somebody that's not familiar with all of the layout of the park and they want to get on a trail and not run into big gaps where they're not going to know where to go next.
Right, but $5,000 of signs and every 35 inches covered. I mean, we, it's, some signage goes a long way.
To me, that's not a trail. You can call it a trail if you want to.
Well, but Ron, we could spend a million dollars and fix that gap or we could spend a few hundred dollars and do some painting and some signage and assume that.
We could even paint footprints.
Give some.
Paint footprints.
Have some faith.
Oh dear God, no, not bad.
Have some faith in people to like connect two points.
I would personally, if we were going to spend a million dollars, go back and connect the trail downtown.
Yeah.
Where we should have done that five years ago.
Well, just in the essence of time.
We need to wrap it up.
What I hear the commission talking about is option three quite a bit. What I need you to impress upon us is option three, a doable engineering project?
Yes.
Okay, and you mentioned there'd be some caveats. A caveat would be about safety, et cetera.
And we can put those all in the final draft report. I think we can lay those out a little more specific.
I think you should because I think what I see coming is a possible budget amendment in the near future where the commission would be able to go forward and get this included to execute at some point, well, in the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Just one more question on that. The Corps doesn't like that, the low-water thing. I'm just, you know, what I don't want to do is get to a point where we spend $30,000 to give them the information they need to disapprove our request.
Sure.
And then we, then we're back to the bridge. So is that likely possible? I mean, I don't know. How much is it going to cost us to get in front of them?
I would not speculate on the Corps making a decision. All I can do is go off the past experience.
I would say if they don't approve it, then we don't build a bridge and we just keep doing what we've done for the last however many years.
We can continue our informal dialogue with them and get hopefully an informal answer. Again, low-water crossings are nothing new in Oklahoma. The difference is this one is going to be a permanent public facility, whereas most of the time, they're just temporary during construction.
Right, but we're not trying to build something to drive a semi or a bulldozer across, trying to get, build something to build up to ride a bike across.
And we realize that, the Corps probably will realize that too, but the Corps is more cognizant of what's happening to the channel, what's happening to the stream, what's happening to the floodplain and the floodway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, is there anything time-sensitive about number five and number six?
I think we can work through those issues at a future meeting. What is the next item?
Got to help item and we're not going to have time to get into it. Move them to the top of the next study session.
You get one of those duck things like they have that you drive on the land and drive across the lawn?
There you go.
It's like water taxis.
No, Carol, it's not. We took it off. It'll be on next time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor will be fine with all these items.
Good.
This is not unusual. I'm glad that we have plenty of things to talk about as we just bring back next time. We'll schedule a special meeting if you guys want to come in and talk about it in between our regular meetings.
Five and six is three and four next study session.
We will have a robust meeting next time, for sure.
Where Jared will meet upstairs at six thirty.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable, Channel 12, and in high-definition on Channel 112. In addition, the study session is live-streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enid.org.